And now everybody on Zoom can hear us. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So let's, we did the pledge. It's Tuesday, February 13th, six o'clock. Here in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. And quickly in attendance, myself, Doug Mogul, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clerk Diane Gale, CAO Steinhardt should be on Zoom. And Assistant CAO Signoni is here and Lisa Anderson is recording from the other room. Now you're all up to date. Six o'clock PM, public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to address to the Select Board. That's not on our agenda tonight. Now's your opportunity. We'll start with the room first. Anyone? Yes, young man.
Joe Diddy, 2588, Rose Southwick, Mass. Last Monday, this meeting got over rather early. I stopped upstairs and watched the conservation meeting. It seems they're bringing up Noble Steed again. I thought that was saying compared, I thought Jason was going to take the frontrunner on Noble Steed and all the headaches over there. But it seems like they're very aggravated over potholes and whatnot. And I know we're supposed to stay in our league and unless the famous Doug Mowgli quote. But that's been going on for a while. I just think folks need to take us serious about their up there.
I can answer any question. If it's okay with you, can we come back to it under old business? Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Joanne, can you see the room now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. 6:05 PM liquor license update for the Ranch Golf Club with Dennis Henry Jr. Since I knew everyone else in the room, I looked over there because I figured that might be you there. Please come on up. How are you?
I'm well, yourself?
I'm great. I'm Doug Mogul. Next, Jason Perron.
Diane Gale.
Nice to meet you.
Nadine Signal. Nice to meet you.
You know why you're here?
Not really.
Do you want me to go through my spiel again?
Should we just make something up?
Several months ago, people were asking about liquor licenses, availability, if they're being used properly, stuff like that. So basically to get familiar with everybody and find out if liquor licenses were going to be used or turned in or the availability would be there. It's just to find out what's going on with everybody. So really, it's just Diane and myself have never met yourself. Or really any of the liquor license applicants other, I had known Mr. Wally prior to Wally family, but. So that's basically why we're here. So do you have anything going on?
Business has been good. Thanks. We're growing every year and liquor is important.
So that's really, you know, that's it. Just, you know, if you guys are happy, I don't know. We haven't had any complaints.
We are.
No change in plans from you then?
Not this year, no. Not this year.
Next year then? But. How long have you been there?
Four years, going on four years.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay.
Easiest meeting you were ever at?
That's right.
Easiest, yes.
We just wanted, we kind of wanted to bring everybody in.
Sure.
Wanted to time and just face to the name and.
Sounds good.
You know, we've, we've had no real issues up at the, at the ranch, so keep up the good work.
Appreciate that.
You guys have a great establishment out there.
Thank you. We try hard. And we really do.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out in the west.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm good evening.
You're doing well. Is Natalie Lynch here or online?
Yep. I'm in, I'm on the Zoom.
Okay. How are you?
Hey guys. Hi guys. How you doing? This is Pat Lynch as well. I just wanted to pipe in. I was under the assumption that this was a hybrid meeting today, so I, I kind of scheduled my day around that. Thinking that you guys, for whatever reason, were, were doing this via Zoom. Otherwise, we would have been down there.
We're hardy souls here in the town of Southwick, but no, it's fine. That's why we have this hybrid meeting. We didn't want to take you away from what you're doing and you can join us via Zoom just as well as you could in person. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks. Great. How about you guys?
Great.
Mr. Lynch, I don't know if you, Mr. and Mrs. Lynch, I don't know if you heard what I had said to Mr. Dennis Henry. A few minutes ago, just really trying to get a feel for what everybody's going to be doing with their liquor licenses. Several months back, people were interested in opening up some places or possibly getting a liquor license and questions were wrote, raised, and we're just trying to get a feel for everybody and see if you have any change in plans or everything's going well or any questions. And to get a familiarization with myself and Ms. Gale. I don't know if you've ever met the Lynch's.
I have.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I, I don't think I've met you personally, but for the most part, we, we're familiar with the rest of the group. You know, we've been operating since 2008 and, you know, everything pretty much for the most part is, is the same. You know, we're just still trying to, I guess, move, move forward and recover from the last few years and the mess that's gone on since 2020. And business as usual.
That's great.
Has it really been since 2008?
Yeah.
Wow.
August 6th, 2008.
Congratulations. That's fantastic. I would have never guessed it's been that long.
That's why I had no hair on my head.
That's why I.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I think, I think I'm carrying around some rail trail alehouse with me as well. It's great food.
I actually do order their steak sandwich quite often. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You guys, do you guys have any questions for us? Everything's going well over there?
Yeah, no, we're just, we're again, just trying to do our thing and, and continue growing within the community and that's, that's pretty much it. We don't really have any questions.
Awesome. Any other questions for Lynch's?
I'm good.
Thank you very much for joining. Now we see you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
You too. See you later.
Take care. Bye bye.
Suddenly I'm hungry.
Okay, why don't we pay a couple of bills here? Acknowledged Payables Warrant Number W2419B dated 2/5 in the amount of $3,583,419.86. Acknowledged Payroll Warrant Number 2417 dated February 13th in the amount of $255,703.31. Acknowledge and approve open session minutes from January the 29th.
Anybody has any issues?
Already reviewed.
I had sent them back to her already.
Okay. Make a motion to.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the open session meetings minutes from the 29th of January.
It's a roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Same thing, but for February the 5th. Did we just see these tonight or did we review these already?
I reviewed and sent. You have changed. Carl and I both had changes, corrections.
I don't. We had this email earlier in the week, right? I sent change factor.
Yeah, we did.
And I read the email, so yeah, I didn't see anything.
Is that a motion then?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the open session meetings from minutes from February 5th, 2024.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to approve the Memorandum of Understanding. Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, settlement agreement between the Town and Southwick Police Coalition for fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 26. Need a motion, please.
Make a motion to accept the MOA between the Town and the South of Police Officers Coalition.
Second.
And for the chair to sign, sorry.
And for the chair to sign.
Yeah, I'll second that as well.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
It only took two seconds to vote on that. It took how long to get here?
Approve and sign letter of understanding between the Town of Southwick and Ken Stomsky for Channel 15.
I have a question on that, if I may ask.
Sure.
What does, where does this position report to?
For it's a car for the CAO.
And I see that there is an insertion for search and acquirement of interns. It will stipend recruiting stipend. What if he doesn't initiate those recruitments if they come from somewhere else?
An excellent question. I don't know the answer. So if his, his MOU has a thing of he stipend for recruiting.
Intern search and acquirement. Yep.
Now, let's say somebody came to us and said, I wanted to be on there.
Yeah. It was not on his prior one.
I think the goal is, one of the goals and objectives that we've carried for a couple of years and including into this year is to kind of, is to continue to flush out a staff, volunteer staff to film events and, and work on editing and stuff like that. So he gets a rate for, I don't know the answer, to be honest with you on that. If you want, we can carry it till next weekend and clear it out if it's a.
Just if it's actually sourced by him, I'm going to be referring some people there, so.
But I still think he gets a hundred bucks for training them.
For the training. Of course, that's separate. Yep. Yep. And I'm just curious, what events and videos would be edited? And where do they come from? What's their source?
That's when he, if he, like he did the parades, he's done some stuff that's gone on in Town Hall that goes, then is then subsequently broadcast on Channel 15. And it takes anywhere from, his average is three to five hours to edit, depending on how long is the event itself. Edits it to make it airable on Channel 15 and on the YouTube channel and all that stuff.
Yeah, I guess my only question then is on, as long as he's actually the recruiter, I have no issue with that. But I'll carry that.
You want to accept, you want to vote on that with that caveat?
Oh, we can do that, sure.
Got a motion then?
I will make that motion to accept this with the caveat that the intern search and acquirement is of his own procurement.
I will second the motion.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. 6:15. Interview with Rob. Rob, how do you say your last, where is he? How do you say his last name? Belanger? How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Rob Belanger.
Doug Mogul. Jason Perron. Diane Gale. Nadine Signal. That's Lieutenant Vanish over there. How are you?
Good, sir. How you doing?
Really? Well, that's yours.
Yeah, that's yours.
It is mine. Okay? No pressure, Rob. You want to water anything? You're good?
Almost up.
Okay, this should be over in, I don't know, two, three hours. We're going to ask you a few questions. 11.
Sounds good.
And then you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions or make any statements or whatever else you want to do from there, and then we'll have a discussion.
Excellent.
Fair enough?
Sounds good.
You ready?
Yep.
Ready?
Yes, I wasn't supposed to be here, so I don't have that in mind.
Oh, you have the extra question?
We have.
Yeah, we did. It's not extra.
I thought they were in your place.
There you go.
So rearrange mine.
There you go.
I don't see them in there.
There you go. Diane, you want to ask the first question while?
Well, yeah, it's usually yours, but this is the hardest one. You've already gone through the interview with the top crew. This is why do you want to become a police officer?
Um, actually, my entire life, I thought I wanted to be a fireman and then I did a internship here in high school and that totally changed my decision and really made me want a career in policing at this very department. So what better place to start than here?
But you are on the Granville Fire Department.
That's right. Yep, I'm still an active member, firefighter, EMT. I've been on for five years officially, but being my dad was a lieutenant there for my childhood. I really spent my whole childhood there, so.
So good idea from the get-go, you're going to be in public service.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So why the Southwick Police Department?
Honestly, I love the community. Growing up here, starting at the rec center level, playing T-ball here, just a great community. And I really enjoyed my time down at Southwick Schools and getting to know everybody. And definitely the internship solidified that I really want to work in this town.
Awesome. Sir?
On this question?
Or the next question?
All right, we'll move to the next one then. What is the importance, Rob, of training and education to a police officer?
It's paramount because if they don't have proper training education, they can't successfully complete their job, especially with legal systems. They have to know constitutional rights and there's a lot of legal areas that stuff could go wrong if they're not properly informed on that or educated.
And you're graduating this May from Westfield State?
That's correct, with a bachelor's in criminal justice.
How's the GPA, bud?
It's 3.5 right now. I don't expect it to move for the last three classes I'm taking, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
Oh, no, that's quite right. Nope, I didn't have anything. I was just listening.
So Rob, what do you perceive to be some of your strong points?
So my strong points, I'm motivated. I pay great attention to detail, given my military job that I currently have inspecting aircraft. And I truly have a passion for it, so it won't be so much a job, more of a passion that I work in this career field.
What are you doing in the Air Force?
I'm a F-15 crew chief over at Barnes.
I was in a 16 crew chief.
Oh boy.
Bondar, yeah, I know. So, because we only have the one engine, I know, I get it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
What type of traits should a police officer have?
A police officer, they should be caring, they should be attentive. They should have, they should have great attention to detail, given small cues that could happen on any call that they need to really pay attention to. And commitment to service, absolutely.
What else?
Nothing I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay. Passion, passion.
Passion, absolutely. That's definitely true.
You said it. Jason?
Your questions, sir.
What extra efforts would you employ to reach out to different groups such as youth and our senior citizens?
I would first talk to my chain of command and get an idea of what they would like me to do. Give recommendations on how we can reach out to those communities and just make an overall effort to make contact with them and just make presence known. Show them that we're people too and.
Would you come down and hang out with everybody?
Absolutely.
So this is kind of right in the same vein. As a Southwick Police Officer, how would you promote good community relations between the Police Department and residents?
Just making my presence known, getting out there and just having good conversations with people. And I believe that's a, a real, it's the real main point of community policing is getting out there and letting people know you're there. And that you're willing and able to be there at a moment's notice if they call.
Can we follow up, Jeff?
No, not at this moment.
Yeah. What experience do you have in the past dealing with intense and stressful situations? And please give an example.
Absolutely.
In work or in life or both?
Definitely have run across a bunch of stressful situations in the fire service, many car accidents with fatalities, many structured fires of different kinds. And there's just a lot going through your head, but at the end of the day, the training just pays off and you remember what you were told and you get the job done.
How do you manage that, Rob? That's a real problem, I think. So that's why I'm asking you. I mean, the stressor is in this job now, especially more than ever before, but how, how do you manage stress?
Mostly with camaraderie with the other firefighters that I've built up in Granville. It's a great group of guys and at the end of the day, we all hang out, decompress and move on and take good training experiences from the last call and just constantly evolve. That's really how we move on with it and up there anyway.
Okay, thank you. Who asked that one?
Diane. Back around me again. All right. If you pulled over a vehicle and it was someone you knew and they asked to be let go or not given a ticket, what would your response be?
My response would be that I have to be impartial. Very simply, I'm just going to look at the totality of the circumstances and just go with my gut on what is reasonable and what is not. And it doesn't matter if I know them.
Does everyone that's pulled over for a traffic violation deserve a ticket?
Absolutely not. There are plenty of people who might not be totally educated on certain motor vehicle laws. And sometimes just stopping them and educating might be the right route. There's also plenty of weird situations that could come out of a motor vehicle stop, certain intersections that are different than others that maybe they just didn't understand or didn't see properly. And we're all humans, we make mistakes, so doesn't warrant a ticket every time.
You make a motor vehicle stop because the license plate is not clearly visible. The driver of the vehicle is late for work, appears to be having some personal issues and is very upset and yelling at you. How do you handle that?
Um, I try to de-escalate the situation. Just let them know it's not that big of a deal if his license plate's obstructed. It's a simple wipe of a hand and it's good to go and I'm not to stress out about it. It's really a simple mistake with how dirty all the roads can get this time of year.
Last one?
Back to you.
Yeah.
You stop another officer that appears to be impaired. What steps would you take?
At that point, I would immediately inform a supervisor and get a higher ranking officer to the scene and just have them there, run it as a normal OUI stop. However, just have them there to hold everything accountable and make sure that we have a second witness there.
What did you learn from your internship at the Southwick Police Department? What was the most important takeaway from that?
The most important takeaway was that I wanted to work in law enforcement. It was, it was just very clear. It got to the point where, when the internship was over, that I was sad that I couldn't go back there. So it definitely solidified me applying myself in criminal justice at college, made me want to go there. And it just really made me know what I wanted to do in the future.
That was during COVID too, wasn't it?
Just before.
Just before. I remember the video like it was yesterday. That was great. For those that haven't seen it, look it up. It was really well done. It was just before COVID?
Yeah, my internship ended in January and COVID really hit in March.
Yeah, wow. Sir, do you have any questions for us or any statements you'd like to make?
Not at this time.
And you're certain the police department is your calling, not the fire service?
Absolutely.
Because we've seen both of that in front of this room in the last year.
Nope, this is definitely what I want to do.
Awesome. Further questions?
The one I've got to ask. You've been offered an opportunity at the Mass State Police?
Oh, that's correct.
And you want to be here that, that much?
Absolutely.
That's impressive. Because that's just impressive.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the interest that you have in Southwick Police Department. That's a big decision.
Thank you. I, like I said, the internship just solidified that I wanted to be here. It was a no-brainer.
When you know, you know.
Absolutely.
Seems there are more defections from fire to police than there are the ways. Seems to be.
It depends on where.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know.
Both are very, very respectable. It's just interesting that we've had a little of both of that.
Shuffle.
And it's admirable. It's an admirable profession and it's an admirable career if you choose to do it. Do you have any long-term goals?
Long-term goals is just to move up in the department over time, get more responsibilities as we go on and just see where it takes us.
Questions, Diane?
What's that?
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Be in touch.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Hold all tickets as they say. Yeah, you can leave them a minute to get and reset here. Yeah, I can give them a minute to get and reset here. Okay. Check on that one. Invite for the Second Annual Beacon Hill on the Berkshire Hills presented by Senator Paul Marks Saturday, April sixth, nine to one at the Lenox Town Hall. Uh, I believe we talked about this last week briefly and you both were gonna go. I'm also gonna try to make it as well.
Yep.
That's great. Approved seasonal liquor license for Edgewood Golf Course of Southwick and New England Disc Golf for two thousand twenty-four. Questions, comments, motions?
Do they really start serving? Are they allowed to start serving alcohol at eight AM?
On a weekend, yes. Usually we don't do on Sunday till noon.
It's not on Sunday.
Right.
Okay. That was my own question.
Need a motion for that.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the seasonal liquor license for Edgewood Golf Course. I'm gonna do them both as an omnibus.
No, let's do them one at a time.
I'll second that.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
And the next one is for Distap LLC, which is the uh.
Yes, so we'll make the motion to approve that. With your license.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Approve Southwick Animal Control Shelter donations totaling four hundred and twenty-nine dollars from B Jensen, twenty-five dollars, M Bowler, two hundred dollars, C Lecky, one hundred dollars. Oh boy, C Zarichak, twenty-five dollars. And to be placed in Animal Control Medical Gift Fund and Animal Control Gift Fund. Need a motion to accept these generous gifts. And I also forgot IBS fifty-four dollars.
And what did we say?
Oh, I missed another one.
Mr. Mrs. Woman.
And oh, it said, it just said Armoreau, twenty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion to accept those donations to the animal shelter.
Second.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Okay, uh, we need to ratify our signatures for the election warrant for the presidential primary on March the fifth. Uh, Tuesday, the fifth of March, seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose, cast of votes in presidential primaries for candidates of political parties for the following office. Presidential preference, state committee man, state committee woman and town committee. Um, and that's for the uh Commonwealth. The senatorial district for this committee man and woman and for the town for town committees. Need a motion to ratify those signatures, please.
Make a motion to do that.
Second.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Van Gell, aye.
Okay, re- review and approve the land license agreement for limited use of real property at one forty-one Congamon Road. Mister Ken Eggleston, I think I saw him. I did see. Well, I put my glasses on and I'll see him again. There he is. Come on up, sir. How are you?
Very well. Ken Eggleston, one forty-one Congamon Road.
What's going on over there?
Well, finally, we've got a lot going on over there in terms of uh rebranding the building from what I had started off with from Ford ads pub to uh to a new restaurant that um is making a lot of interior changes. And um hopes to opening up in the next couple of months.
Do you have a name for it yet or are you not allowed to share it yet or?
Uh, no, I think that they've uh they've given the paperwork to um to the town here. The um it's twofold. The uh, the old Krabby Joe restaurant itself is gonna be renamed to the Fusion Bar and Grill. And the uh boathouse part of it is, and I laugh at when I say this, Coffee Canvas Cafe. I know there's a few coffee shops out there, but um there's a new one coming to town. It's gonna do a lot more than just serve coffee.
Canvas.
We'll get photos, you know, like, you know, something you can put on the internet type stuff. Have your picture taken. I don't know that much about. That's what I've been told. Like, how did you come up with the name? But they'll be serving breakfast Monday through Saturday there. Over at the Fusion Bar and Grill, they'll be serving big breakfasts and brunches on Sundays as well as lunch and dinners. I think they plan on closing on Mondays or something like that. But all that'll come out at a later time. The uh, the owner is a Southwick resident. His name's Damian. Valak. Um, forgive my pronunciation. V O L. Pretty easy to spell it.
V O L.
Yeah, I got it one second here. V O L K O V. And Damien is D E M Y A N. D E M Y A N. It's Damien. V O L K O V.
K O.
V.
Yep.
And the partner who's gonna be running the fusion restaurant is um Joe Fernandez with an S. Not a Z.
Awesome.
The uh, as you know, I bought this property almost four years ago now. And um, a couple of years ago, we we thought we'd be moving a- ahead a lot further than we did. And we applied for uh the license for the limited use of the ro- of the property owned by the town or state. And we were, on paper, we were offered that license. And then a year later, it finally, it finally got pro- well, it was approved. A year later, apparently it was uh it was finally gone through all the attorneys and and it was uh recorded. Of course, for the last year, I, or not the last year, but for the last six months, I didn't know that it had ever been taken from this office to the, back to the attorneys and it was recorded, but it was definitely recorded. I don't know if you have copies of that yet.
I don't have the executed copy. I have the executed copy executed in two thousand twenty-two.
Right. And then it wasn't until June of twenty-three that it went from Carl to Begl- Beglan's office and back and then given to my attorney to file. It was June of twenty-three before that happened. And then, and then it was filed. And of course, we haven't had it, we haven't had to make use of the land, so to speak. Uh, other than tearing down the old Krabby Joe um advertising sign. But the building hasn't been open, so we haven't used the space.
So now we're being asked to review and approve the agreement.
Right. Initially, the initial paperwork said that it would be reviewed. Was it every year or every two years? Oh, cool. Yeah, four, four point one, the agreement will begin on the effective date, whatever that is. It will continue for a period of two years. It will automatically renew for another two-year term unless terminated by yourselves. I mean, it's been two years since it was basically approved.
Yeah, almost.
So I asked about it back in November, December. And uh here we are. So I'd like to, I'd like to get it started. It actually, you know, it's never started. And now that we are ready to open the doors, we're gonna need that limited use of the land. Technically, we won't need it until May, when the uh, when the voters come in.
Just curious, are you still running the Marina part?
Yes. Yes, the Marina, the building is not, it's not sold. It's leased to these gentlemen.
Hmm.
So they're leasing the building, restaurant, food, liquor, and the, but the Marina is still mine. And I it's, it's full.
So separate from this discussion, somebody's gonna be in front of us for a change of manager soon.
Yeah, and I had hoped that um I, my attorney, uh, Matt Donahue, um, he was ill last week, I guess. And uh, he's working on getting the paperwork um written up to give to Lisa so that it can go into the newspaper for uh, for its two-week, whatever you get, whatever that's called. It's telling the townspeople or the butters. I'm not sure how that goes. Uh, but that's, I had hoped it would have been done today. It's, you'll see it. It's in intimate. I'll just see it shortly. Um, he and I discussed it last week and uh this morning he was asking for um my tenant's lawyer's name. Communicate with them.
Gotcha.
And uh we had, we had not we, I from my previous attorney uh who got the liquor license led me to believe that it would, it would be a simple in-house here to change just the manager on the license.
Hmm.
Um, Matt Donahue doesn't think that it's that in conjunction with talking to a guy named Sean with the Liquor Commission.
With the ABCC?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but that's, that's, you know, I told my tenant that, you know, yeah, we gotta, you know, we gotta apply for it. We gotta go to the town and get approved by um, the select board and then just change the manager's name.
Then they still vet it too, though. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. I'm not selling the liquor license. I'm still gonna own the liquor license. They're just going to operate the, operate with the license.
Okay. Back to the discussion on this agreement.
Yes.
I'm gonna take it from the post-it note on the front of it. Plus the uh, the commentary here that you have not made any payments against the licensing fee for years one and two of the agreement, correct?
I've made no payments, nor have I received any bills to do so. Or any follow-up to that, to that effect. I have not paid something that I was told to pay. I'm hoping that that meant that you felt it wasn't due. I'm hoping that that means that uh, maybe you can start now going forward, since the land was not being used. At minimum, I would say start it June of two thousand twenty-three, not, not twenty-two for sure. Cause it was just, you know, it's like it's just a procedural thing back then was to, to get it, to get that license, knowing that we can move forward.
Well, and I, you know, in, in um I mean, there was a bit of a process here, right? And there was the, there was the planning board process. I'd have to look to see what they, they finished their their deal, but the license was impactful to zoning, to you having the parking for the whole thing, to have the, a license agreement in place, right? And then, but then there was appeals and and certain other things that wound up happening along the way. So I'd, I'd have to go back to my notes to see when that all cleared. So um.
When what, when what, what do you think?
Between the appeal of the chapter ninety-one license, then there was, and then, you know, the restaurant and, and neither of those facilities opened. The Marina was open, but none of the other facilities opened that would have required the use of the the special permit.
That is correct.
So, or, and the special permit was predicated on this license to have the space for the parking to get the special permit. Um.
Yeah, that was underweighted to the, to the Marina though.
Correct.
Right.
But you could have run the Marina without this license.
Absolutely.
Right, based on the parking, if I recall from.
Yeah, those, those ten, those spaces for the Marina are designated.
Right.
There's signs up and they're not.
And even if they weren't, you had plenty of room that wasn't being used because this wasn't open.
That is true too.
Well, your, your plumber and your electrician didn't take up that much room while they were working over there.
It seemed like they did.
Uh, discussion by the board, I would not be opposed um, to picking this up from June of twenty-three and carrying it through to this year. And then um, I will also note, if I recall, though, don't quote me, I believe the um special permit also has a renewal provision in it as well.
Special.
This special permit from the planning board, swim lanes, not our deal, but I'm, this is a renew, this is a two-year renewal that automatically renews unless um we tell you in writing that we're not gonna renew it.
Yeah.
If they tell us they want the land or we need the land for a turn lane or a sidewalk or something.
I believe what you're referring to with the planning board is a meeting that I had a month or so ago. Um, I want to think it was back in November because that was two years after. And, and, and the basic part of that meeting was to say, we've got nothing to say because we've not been open, so there's nothing for for me to tell you what our problems were or, or the police to say what problems there were. So it's just another review next year type of thing.
Right.
Those, I think, were the results. And that was, that was in, I had some time to do it in November.
Yeah.
And uh, so, right.
Their rework.
Re- their rework.
No one knew how that was gonna all work out with the parking and the use, and it hasn't even started, so it's hard to.
Yeah, and we still don't know. We still don't know. But I so I know that I'm gonna, I certainly it's not gonna be a lot of parking over there for, you know, for what needs to go on. But I would like you to consider um starting today or this season of two thousand twenty-four, not going back to twenty-three.
Well, you said it, not me. That's why I took on your, your offer.
Well, I said minimum. I, you know, but that's okay. I just, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to.
And that's what I want to have a discussion amongst the board here and see what they think is reasonable. I, I.
I'm not using.
I wanna see you be successful over there and, and, you know, get this place open. You know, everyone's been really vocal about that and being, trying to be as supportive, I think mostly as possible to try to get this place open and, and put to good use, right?
In the last year, I'll agree with that statement. Prior to that, I'm not so sure where anybody stood from any department or people. But in the last, yeah, ever since I got the chapter ninety-one license, everybody just kinda mellowed out a little bit back in May of last year.
The termination date on this would be five twenty-three, twenty-four, five two-three, two-four. So I would be in favor of making the payment due for the new period, five twenty-four to twenty-five. His first payment due.
So starting it this year, May?
Yes. For the year May twenty-four to May twenty-five.
Was witnessing the thing Mr. Eggleston went through, I'm not opposed to that.
So I wanna put it in the form of a motion then?
I'll make a motion to, you know, start the.
I think it's renewing this agreement is what it actually we're doing, right? Cause this is gonna end in
Yeah.
twenty-four.
Re- I'll make a motion to renew this agreement. May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four with payments beginning May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Make uh, and for the minutes, can we make a, or make a note that we need to send Mr. Eggleston an invoice?
If someone wants to second that.
Yeah, seconded.
Discussion? I saw a hand raised and it's the harbor master, so I figured I'd let him have his.
No, just that, not that I know that you want to delay this any longer than it has to be, but you might wanna check with your counsel regarding the, you staying on the liquor license and my understanding with the A B C C and the past experience is that in this scenario, it has to be a full transfer of your liquor license to where you're leasing it to. Um, you want to, cannot be on the lease. You might wanna just make sure.
Okay, I'm, I've been in touch with Sean about that. It's um from the A B C C. I can own the license, but my name cannot be on the license. Um, as a manager or whatnot, is the way that I'm.
We went through the same thing with the brass row.
I was just gonna say, isn't that exactly where, isn't that a pledging of the license? Isn't that what that essentially is, right?
Yeah, I don't believe that's.
Let's come back, let's come right back to that, cause there's a, a second in motion on the floor to this. Let's just clear that and then we can have this discussion just to close it out. Uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Danny Gell, aye.
Okay, that's done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you wanna, if we wanna have that other decided discussion to be supportive.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a call soon now. Get in touch, just to make sure that we don't delay you and you, you know. I'm gonna see their way, so.
So what, what is it you're saying? So, what what is it you're saying? You're saying that I would no longer own the liquor license? Love your thought.
Now, there's been other arrangements. It, I don't wanna hold the board up for what they got tonight, we can talk separately on this matter.
Well.
Okay, so this looks sounds like the easy parts have been gone. Well, yeah, one more hurdle.
One more hurdle, there's uh. Pretty much, thank you very much for your understanding and.
Thank you.
I'll look forward to an invoice.
Thanks for your person.
I mean, I figured I'd get a bill sometime, that's why I didn't really write it.
We usually don't send out bills.
Well, I'm happy to just pay it if we're in agreement with this.
Well, we are in agreement with this, and I I took a note, we will send you a bill because. It's not the first time I've heard someone ask that I never got a bill for this, so I didn't know to pay it. But it's a permit, so it's in a license agreement, so.
Usually, they write the check at first on encounter, then they get their signed paperwork. That's kind of how it's always worked, I've never seen a bill that you.
Correct.
Would you like me to run a check right now?
No, but what we'll do is we'll execute the extension letter, you know, please don't write a check down.
And then you can sign.
And and then you can get a copy of the extension when we trade the check, but we'll get you a bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for persevering.
Thank you.
Happy value, Chris, thanks for reminding me.
Yep.
Good luck.
You take her to write AID or CVS, that's our plan.
Yep.
Uh, okay. I I believe I heard that argument once before that I didn't pay what others do because I didn't get the bill. I've been the same guy. Authorized chair to see, sign, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, Closeout Agreement with the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. With a motion, please.
You will make, I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Authorized chair to sign MOA between the Town of Southwick and the Library Employees Union Local four-two-four. Sets in the chair mail.
Yes, looks like this.
Yeah, the living livable community is one I got. Police office. I got. That's not it.
That's not the one.
I got it. Okay.
Motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the MOA.
Second, do we need an explanation of what's at MOAs?
Looking at.
Need to expand on that.
Between the. Uh, United Public Services Employees Union Local four-twenty-four, for the library employees.
To cover extra hours, I'll make, I'll second that.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Danny Geller, aye.
Oh, that, that's original, huh? Authorized chair. To sign MOA between the Town of Southwick and UPSU. Local four-twenty-four Clerical Union. United Public Service Employees Union. And this is a uh. Sick bank donation. Need a motion, please, for the chair to sign.
To accept the uh. An MOA.
For the chair to sign.
And for this sick weave. Transfer.
I will second that motion for the chair to sign that MOA for the sick weave transfer.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Danny Geller, aye.
I signed two or one. Authorized chair to sign MOA between the Town of Southwick and Southwick Police Officers Coalition. And this is what we talked about, this was actually kind of, it was a previous MOA that was not put into the. Settlement agreement, so this. MOA will. Enable that to be put into the upcoming contract when. The whole thing is ratified, and this is regarding the military service that was that we had acted on. Uh, I should say we. But this was in nine twenty-eight, twenty-two, so we.
Twenty-two?
Yep. We acted on.
Make a motion to accept that MOA, hold the contract.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Danny Geller, aye.
It's just by way of explanation for those of why we have so many of these, but this one was in particular was special in that. We we were put in, and I'm gonna summarize this badly probably, but we were put in a position where. Certain military members ended up having to either lose pay or lose time to offset military service, so this kind of keeps them whole. With their pay within the Southwick uh. Police Department while they're uh serving their country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business first, review revised COA Director Job Description, determine hours and pay.
The job description, I sent it on the first time, if I type those in it, so I fix it and we send it, but you get the gist of it, we'll get it all cleaned up if I don't have stuff right first.
Discussion.
Yeah, go ahead. Sure, you see highlights, may respond to emergencies, including performing home visits when necessary. Is that a safety concern, and should they be?
Um. I think that may. Be, um but if, I know that Cindy did.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was at home. And that may have been more of a local care thing, but I I I don't know that.
So, I would discourage that if that were me.
I think it it depend, I mean, it's, it wasn't used often, and it was sometimes it was more of. You know, visiting on someone who had been sick or whatever, and and that it was a frequent member of the senior center, that type of thing. Um. Certainly within our purview to strike it, but it's also.
I think. I think that we could. Maybe take out may respond to emergencies, that would not be.
Yeah.
About the home, allow the home visit.
Based on thoughts, how much?
I understand where you're coming from, it's an issue of liability, someone doesn't take care of their property and our person goes down, actually.
Um, it's an issue with mental stability of. The person in the homes. We've seen those tragedies happen.
Hmm.
In other places, thank goodness, but. Yeah, yeah.
Just go, thank you. Responding to emergencies, I don't like that at all. That could be pretty problematic.
Hmm, I wouldn't wanna put it as a duty in a job description, if they choose to do that on their own. That's a different story than the town. Making a job requirement. A job responsibility. To me. I'm fine with that.
So how would you phrase it?
I would just take it out entirely.
Okay.
That whole.
The whole thing.
Including home, performing home visits.
They'll respond to emergencies in the building and, you know. On duty.
Yeah, that may, I mean, obviously, that makes sense to respond to emergencies that are work-related.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but. You know. That aren't necessary and performers of their duty.
Hmm.
And then, you know, I don't know, Diane, what did you say about the home visits made? You don't even want that listed as a job.
Put it in there.
Okay. It's on them.
Uh, if they wanna go visit friends on their own time, sure. There are just a couple of things in here that are kind of redundant and could get consolidated, and it won't look so overwhelming.
But I'm not overwhelmed.
Like, you know, identifies plans and develop short and long-term goals for the department and communicates to the board, which is pretty much the same as one, plans and prepares the annual budget and the COA goals and objectives. There's some things that can be, a couple of them in here, if I can just send you those and you can look at them.
Mm-hmm.
Assures proper maintenance of all department records, including client intake, that part's good. And personnel records, does that go to you?
No, me, me.
Uh, at the bottom of this page, responsible for personnel management, you can strike managing beach staff, scheduling, lifeguard and training. Coming up. Second, page three, the second one, I'm just gonna read them and you guys can chime in. Uh, approval or disapproval of employee leave requests requiring return to duty notes and such other personnel actions to assure safe and efficient operations, is that also? HR?
Well, the the director would approve leave requests for their department. The return to duty would be.
Yes. The one, two, three, four, fourth bullet oversees the maintenance of the senior centers and COA office building, the maintenance and security of the facility. The buildings, the grounds and equipment, that's. Wait, I'm on the wrong overseas. Um, administers and OSAs here. So, the second part of this, is that really the COA director, or is that buildings and grounds?
It depends.
Because it was park and rec.
It's in the police chief's job description, that the police chief is responsible for the station house and all equipment they're on, just by way of example, it's kind of a, they're kind of responsible. For their area and making note of things that need to be addressed, it may be someone else that actually does the addressing.
Okay.
Maybe it's police chief job description, not contract, that's cool.
Investigates and prepares reports for all incidents and accidents occurring on town property and reporting to all appropriate personnel and agencies, is that an HR NAD? Regarding live zones, workers comp, et cetera, the next one right under that. This. Um, that's a town-wide thing, isn't it?
Well. Like, when there's an incident for the police, um Sue will sometimes fill up the paperwork and get it to me, and then I. I file it with the intern, such kind of stuff, so it's, it's whoever. Really witnesses the incident that would make the report, and then I take it from there.
Okay.
Because if I'm not.
So, that would be in the senior center?
Yes.
Not on all town property, that implies all town property, correct, so that should say senior center. Then, correct.
What about if they're.
COA incidents, yeah, I'm sorry.
What if they're off site on a senior center function?
That's not on town property.
They say they need to record it.
There. Well, then that's, then that's not what that says either.
Hmm.
Then that would be a second.
Uh, that's almost a change in the performance of their duties.
Hmm. Good idea.
Did you get that, what is it?
Yep, okay. And then you took out the ADA stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
On that one. And then the special knowledge, does then that quarry administration come out?
Hmm.
Since you took out the duties of that. Okay, yeah.
That's now, the the ADA coordinator now falls under your job description.
And the quarry checks.
The only thing I would add on this, if I may, is just tighten up. COA and COA board are are. Referenced in a couple of different ways throughout the second page especially, and just make sure it's clear, cause the council on aging. Board of Directors or whatever their COA board is one thing, and then the COA is. Uh, the council on aging is kind of overreaching, talking about the council on aging, the senior center and so on and so forth, and so it gets. Just if you read through the document, it's.
Okay.
You know, like in the the third to the last bullet. Does it meet with the chair and any other member, and that was right above. Meeting with the select board and a couple other boards, so this probably should say the COA board and other places where it says COA department, and then other places it just says COA, you just might wanna tighten it up.
Okay.
But other than that, I think with the change, plus with the changes that Diane.
I'm sorry, I have a couple other. On the last page, says ability to, ability to, I would rather see those experience in. These things, experience in communicating. Experience in preparing capital plans and budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Et cetera. And in the working knowledge of computers, et cetera, including hosting and participating in remote meetings.
Okay.
That's my input, sorry.
Okay. Hours and, we got through the first half of the sentence. Determine hours and pay level. Nadine, do you recall what the hours were for that position before we combined this position and changed it?
I actually tried to figure that out, it's um. I believe it was thirty.
It was thirty, they've done what we got last time around. It was thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a recommendation on a pay, level of pay?
I don't know.
What was it when it was thirty before? At least the inflation's gonna affect that, but.
Originally. It was thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents. For the director as the COA director at thirty hours. Do we wanna come back to this part? Cause I would like Nadine to verify, this is missing, I was trying to do this, and I don't have that information. Um. I was dissecting the park and rec program coordinator and the COA, and then looking at them as they combined and what the trending was on those, but I'm missing, I have a little gap here.
Okay.
If she can fill that in and share that with us, we can be prepared.
For next week.
Nail that down, we aren't meeting next week.
We'll be ready next week, we are second to meet.
We just won't meet. We just won't meet, is that all right?
The promo.
Can I do that, so you can, I'll send you that. Or you can have this one, I can just make, fill it in, but I can send you the worksheet, you can just fill it in.
Okay.
All right. The half of that was.
Um, I asked to have this put on there. Um, as we head into budget season. If there was anything from the select board that we foresee needing, uh, funding at any level. We should bring that back within the next couple of weeks to, for discussion and putting into the budget discussion. I know we've talked over the last year, I put two on there. Just to kick off the discussion, I know we've discussed over the last year or more was that we probably need to start looking at redoing the town webpage. Um, and moving off of the Drupal site to a more customer-friendly, if you will, site. Um, it's not an insignificant expense, it's not ginormous and there's some grant money out there too. But if you don't budget for it, you can't do it. And then the other was, and this coincides with, uh, a letter here from, uh, the planning board uh, that I'd like to discuss, but if we, if we're going to start to establish a master plan implementation committee, um. They, they're gonna need a, a budget, there was a lot of items in the master plan that are gonna take, you know, mon- monies to do, I'm not proposing that we set forth those monies, because they haven't really been identified yet, and the master, master plan implementation committee hasn't even been formed. And, uh, but we should probably set aside a, a de minimis amount of money just for the operation of that committee, as once it's established, who is gonna need secretarial support, it's gonna need supply, blah, blah, blah. Like I said, it'd be de minimis, but we should probably reserve some, uh, funds, I remember a couple of years ago, I think it was economic development, probably five years ago, they didn't have a budget at all. Um, so we, they got established with a small budget, AgCon was no different either. So for the meeting on the twenty. At least I don't have a calendar.
Twenty-sixth.
Whatever, yes. Just have those for discussion with, you know, some ballpark numbers.
Okay.
Um. Next item is a letter from the Southwick Planning Board. I guess all of them. Uh, on January twenty-third, Southwick Planning Board discussed the composition and genesis of a master plan implementation committee to act in an administrative capacity and help guide various boards, committees and permissions as well as town department staff towards achieving the goals and objectives set forth in the final draft plan. Uh, however, they dug editorialization by Doug, uh, they already went off the master plan recommendation and the composition of the master plan implementation committee, which is their right. Motion was made by, uh, Mr. Spina and second by Mr. Utz to send a letter to form a master plan implementation committee with three resident members to be appointed by the planning board, a select board member to be nominated by the select board and a planning board member to be nominated by the planning board. I believe that last one is the addition. And the motion was unanimously passed. However, the accordingly, the planning board requested separate authorized formation of this group initially as a planning board subcommittee to aid in its launch and to help to maintain momentum towards anticipated transition to a standalone town committee. Uh, any questions, contact John Gaudge.
Um, oh, don't ask you, ask John.
Well, hey, no one asked, so you got my opinion, my second opinion is this, we should go ahead and form the master plan implementation committee. We had a lot of you, and you were on the master plan, um, honorary member, you were at every meeting, but, uh, and you were at a lot of them, but there was a lot of back and forth on this issue and it was hotly can hotly debated as much as a master plan thing could be, but I strongly believe that this should be a subcommittee of, of this board, not of the planning board, because so many of the master plan items fall outside the purview of land use.
I made the same suggestion at that meeting.
So.
They ignored me too.
Well, that's the good news, is we got elected to, to this seat, so we get to actually make that rule. Um, with all due respect to the planning board, I think, I, I understand where they're going, but I, I I remember going around and around with the, the chair of the master plan advisory committee on this a few times.
Uh huh.
Um. His initial, his initial swipe at, uh, implementation committee didn't include anyone from the select board and included the conservation coordinator and a couple of other folks, and, and then I proposed, well, if you're gonna do it with all-town staff, then make it all-town staff, but don't have some, it was very picky and choosy as to which elected and which appointed. Um, or town employees, not even appointed, were gonna be on the, the, um, implementation committee, and I believe it was actually uh, Mrs. Book Overgan, who suggested that it be predominantly members of the community, more than anyone else, so you have a select board member, I'm not opposed to a planning board member, and then three members. Um. And three resident members to be appointed by the planning board. It, it was, it would be my take on it, that it'd be, it'd be a select board appointment um, to that, and those three members be appointed as, we are the appointing authority for that, for the master plan implementation committee. Um. And they, they'll have, and have a planning board appointment and three members of the public, that's my opinion. But certainly open, open for discussion, or if you want to carry this to a future meeting to discuss it further.
I'm of the same opinion as you.
Well, you stated exactly, it's not just, you've got all sorts, everything, everything's covered in there, it's not just planning, so that you're the subcommittee is, you're recommending is, I have no problem with that. The select board.
So we will, we shall send a memo back, a strongly worded memo back to the planning board. Take this, man. Should we vote on that?
I was just gonna say that.
Wouldn't we like to put that, my long-winded dialogue into the form of a motion?
I will make a motion to make these master plan implementation committees send the message back to the planning board that it should be a select board, so like appointed committee.
With three members of the public and one member of the planning board and one member of the select board?
Yes.
And I have second though.
Doug Moguen, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Dan Gal, I.
Okay. Discuss T C C office possibility of extended evening hours. This was with Carl last I left it. Everyone's looking at me like, I had asked Carl months ago, and Mr. Dee Dee brought it up in, in public comments last week, but this has been going on for, for quite a while now, with, we've had some transition in that office, we're back at full staff now. We had closed Fridays um, because of shortage of staffing, we no longer have that situation. We'd like to bring that office back, I, I would like to see that office back open five days a week, and while we were at it, one of the, one of the discussion points that came up was perhaps we should look at having modified hours on Friday and have another day during the week that that window's open later in that, into the evening, just like not to use the transfer station as a direct analogy, but, you know, folks work during the day, they leave town before they open, they come home before they close, and it's a burden to try to get to the window. You have to take time off from work or what have you to, to, to hit that window, so if you do want to conduct business at the window, what if they were open one night during the week? One of the, and I had talked to Carl about it, and, um, Carl was, was pretty direct with me that it was really within his purview as the C A O. If it's a desire of the board to see it done, Carl was in charge or the C A O was in charge of that implementation, so I kind of let, let it be. And so I guess we're coming to full circle on that, I'd like to further the discussion, and we did check with, under the, uh, existing union agreements we have that we do have some flexibility under the existing union agreements that we can have hours outside of regular eight-thirty to four. Um. For those, uh, for someone to work that hours. So that's not a gate to doing what we wanted, though.
Well, I, I agree with what you said and what Mr. Dee said, you know, the it should be open, that's a definite, should be open on Fridays. Um, as far as, and I agree with the, trying to stagger a day, to pick a day where you have a late start, that's always been a gripe of mine across the border and different offices over there, where, um, you know, you just said, you can't necessarily get in. Somebody works during the day, they can get in on those specific hours and it makes it very difficult to get stuff done, so I agree, we should do something with some sort of flex hours, um, I mean, you can see my recommendations to maybe get people to do it, I was in that email.
How far away is the physical separation of the bodies?
Still being discussed, we, though, the legislation hasn't been passed nor sent to the governor for her signature yet. Um, and then I think we still have to have a greater conversation around all of that, and to see really.
Not imminent.
No.
At all.
May haven't even started to lay out a design, and then I think, I think it's also, I want to have a further conversation with, um, the C A O and anyone else here too. Um, and we could do it when Carl's here in, in open session is really is to take a look at this and go, do we really need to start moving walls around and move stuff around to do this? Separate the offices, can we make another office for the clerk over in the existing space? Utilize the same staff we're gonna have, they're gonna work on both sides of the house, why do they need to be on separate sides of the hallway? Maybe there's a money to be saved, the resources to be shared, and can we actually construct an office for the clerk? In, you know, the town clerk and the treasure collector within the same confines of the same space we have.
Many people have that business.
Well, then maybe there's something to it, so we should probably, it probably can be done.
As far as, um, there, there was some thoughts on maybe Fridays for a half a day.
Right.
Um. I think.
Which year?
It's like which half of the day, exactly, some people will leave work early on Friday to get to town hall before they close. So if they take the afternoon off and the town hall's closed, it defeats the purpose, that might not be the best, I don't know.
I just think, uh, we'll have to, what's that?
No, I'm saying if it's open and they, they're suggesting closing early on Friday to have the evening hours a different day. Friday might not be the day you want to shift.
My recommendation, basically, maybe canvas your employees and see if somebody will be willing to to do a stagger, a stagger shift in the middle of the week, I wouldn't do it on Friday. You know, to me, it makes more sense to have it, you know.
I wouldn't have Friday being the late evening, but I wouldn't have.
Right, like a Wednesday or a Thursday and then.
Annoying to people now on the short, on the missing day.
Yeah.
They don't want a short day either, I think. I think.
Well, let's get that, well, I think we at least have the, uh, that's good feedback, though, you're right, so maybe like, just for instance. You know, Wednesday is a short day, Tuesday's a long day, or the transfer stations are in inverted, right.
The weakest dentist, other than Fridays.
So, all right, well, we'll carry this through on.
Would have to go to them.
Under old business, because this was brought up and it, it's been something we've been driving, we just gotta get it done.
So, so no answer yet on opening on Fridays, but could we open on Friday now and then still work?
That's what I was about to say, why can't we just open on Fridays?
Since, I, I was just thinking, if we're gonna make that whole moving thing soon, might as well just do it all at once, but if it's not.
No, I think we can.
Just do it.
Correct. If it's okay with you, I will confer with Carl tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Review and authorize Southwick libraries submit a community preservation act grant to CPC committee for improvements to the library facility. Any objection?
None.
No, no.
Looks fun, looks good.
Discuss S P D officer candidate for employment offer. Discussion.
We know we're gonna be meeting the Manning, you know, we received the chief's update, just how they, you guys have done stuff in the past, or the town's done stuff in the past, and uh, it's, it is imperative to get the bodies on the street as soon as possible, um, and I, because I'm very impressed with Mr. Bollinger, you know, especially someone that's willing to come with smaller than, than the mass state police, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a good decision to make. And for him to decide that he wants to be here, I, I would definitely like to have a candidate like that here.
It's very passionate. But thank you for moving that along, initiating that and getting that rolling, um, he was very motivated, you know. He seemed truthful that as a little boy, he wanted to be.
A father.
Yeah, and, um, that he's seen some bad stuff already and still gum-hell for it is, says a lot.
So is there a motion to?
I will make a motion to.
I want to make sure we get it right, because he's got to go to the academy and all that other stuff too, so he's not a qualified police officer yet, right, so you know what you're doing, make a motion. This is right up your alley.
A motion to offer to Mr. Bollinger the position for an officer's candidate, a conditional employment offer.
Subject to all the yada, yada.
Yeah, well, that's.
I'll second that.
And I wasn't gonna go there, that's not my thing to say.
Yeah, he is, that's fine. It's all good, love that, uh, roll call vote for Mr. Bollinger?
Bollinger.
I had a kid, a friend of mine growing up, and it was said exactly opposite, that's why I keep messing up, offer rob a job, uh, Doug Moguen, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Dan Gal, I.
She's still around, or he like? You guys really got to look up his intern video that he did, is it on YouTube somewhere?
We can find it.
Yeah, it was really well done, it was really well done. Um. Any other new business tonight? Mr. Peron?
None right now, we've got enough stuff going on.
You sure do, Mrs. Gal?
No, no.
Mrs. Signaling?
Mrs.
Liz?
Is it Nadine?
Nadine.
We'll go with Nadine. Oh, good lord. Old business and dates to remember, moving right along. Police chief internal recruitment process responses are due tomorrow. Valentine's Day.
Uh huh.
Board evaluations and appointed progress. I read it, I have no real objections.
No.
Everything's good to go.
Why not?
Exactly.
I'll take that. Now I gotta go look, there was some questions for you though that needed response. I don't have my color copy, I can't read those, I mean.
We got, we got two weeks to come back to it, it's already seven-thirty, H S I C I M A for Westfield, no update. The, uh, the group is working on the contract. Marijuana dispensary webpage posting H C A process and template. Sorry, I didn't know where you got one, all right. There you go, there you go.
Stuff that was in there already, I'm good.
Just to update you on the related things, um, I did send Ben Coils, the host community agreement with insertions for him to review. Related to what you have in your hands, we do have to decide if we are going to charge a, an application fee.
I saw that.
And then once we do that, um, we should be able to then post the equity policy. And then we can discuss the rest of that. That you have under that.
I have a question, under the equity policy, does that, does that usually include a waiver of said fee? Application fee?
It's part of, it's, it's a statement in here that we may consider a waiver or reduction of that fee for those. For those identified classes.
And how did you come to seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh, let you ask that. That is based on. A boatload of other towns. That ranged from five hundred, five hundred, one hun- plus a one hundred Board of Health fee, so six hundred. One thousand three fifty, nine hundred. So I came in at seven fifty. Which would be required? Should we have special applicants or require attorneys to review? Um, conditions. For for applications. In the future, they may need some other consultant for unforeseen things. So what is in yellow there on, I'm sorry, you wanna keep?
No, go ahead.
So what's on the first page is options of who's going to review these. We haven't discussed that either. Is it gonna be the three of us are gonna review these applications? Independently and then score them, send them into C A O to. Bring to, we won't see each other's, bring to a meeting and then we discuss them, debate them, review the qualifications. Or do we have an interim party do that? And then make a recommendation to.
I think depending on the application, because it's gonna be. Either you're gonna score it during a kind of an interview type of thing with the, you know, an application and interview, and you're gonna score it in a meeting? Or you're proposing that. You have the committee of, a committee of the E D C, Police Chief, Director of Public Health. And a designee of the select.
And those were from some other towns. That's what, that's how they compiled their screening. I don't necessarily. Throw that.
I think it should just be us.
Option three.
Option three. Is we do it, they'll be submitted, we'll get them, we can do the evaluation. You know, on our, on our, our own time.
And then talk about it.
Score it ourselves, then commit, and we'll talk about what we thought of it.
That'd be the wrong.
And then some of the other yellows are just all related to those choices. Um, the fee you need to decide. And I put in yellow, as I said in the email, um. Where where you might question why we would watch the timeline for operations. There's nothing in here that is really not in. This N C C regulations, which yes, I have now read the entire darn thing. Yes, um, so to include them in here is not onerous on anybody. They have to do these things anyway. I eliminated some things that we wouldn't care about that are zoning related and they would be under a special permit. Or under um, fire and safety review, normal things they would have to do. So you can take your time and review that. We can come back to this next time we meet after you've digested.
We were trying to get this moving along.
We are.
I think that's a solid approach. I mean, you've got, I'm. Kudos, this is a lot of work here. I was reading this this afternoon and and uh. A ton of work went into this, no doubt.
Yes, no doubt.
No doubt. Yeah, I wanna think about this a little bit. I not to, I don't wanna delay. I wanna get. We've been watching at this. I just, I wanna just really underst-. I wanna be respectful of everyone else. Everyone else that's gonna have a a look at this and make sure that we're not overstepping, but that they, you know, there are some things that are worth calling out. And to understand where they're coming from.
Yep.
And some of it may be in their control and some may not be. Timeline for achieving operation of a marijuana establishment, ever, I think that one. Well, when I read that today, I'm like, oh, they're not even driving the bus on that, as much as Ken wasn't driving the bus on Krabby Joe's. With the planning board and chapter. Triple C.
What that means is for us to gauge how. Astute they are to what they have to accomplish. And that they're not just winging it. And that's what a lot of the guidance is about.
Sure.
And again, that is required in their C C C application. So we're actually, so if if we're, if we're ahead of the C C C application, a lot they're gonna do for us. They're just gonna hand over in their C C C package.
Sure.
So they have to do it anyway. And we're in the pipeline before they get to that in many cases. And we have two candidates, two applicants, two potential applicants who are. Um, equity applicants.
Is there another one since last week or there was?
One of the earlier ones is. And the one we got last week.
Good.
So one of those two theoretically would get a. Higher ranking due to that, if if we. So I I opted to go this way pretty much with a narrative and supply us this documentation. Rather than an application form. Because there's a lot of. Supporting document to it. And then scoring it, we can just rank. Um, you know, give give them a, a point zero to five on every category, how strong their content is. And then, and then come up with that way to do it. But we're gonna discuss this next week. You guys think about how we wanna score it two weeks. So next time we meet. Think about how you wanna, other ways you wanna.
It's gotta be numerous or else, because you gotta, you gotta total up your number and come up with the subjective or objective number and say. I got forty-two for this, you have forty-one for this, you have forty-six for this, and then you rank them all by number.
Yeah, so that. Kind of points you in this review criteria into those buckets.
Cause there's.
The strength of each bucket then.
Yeah, and every, I just learned and. Everyone's, the people grade differently, right? You can give everybody a review and you can look at all of my numbers. If I do one of the five of these. And you can look all, all of my five within the context of my five. So, you know, like, everyone's had easy graders in school and tough graders in school, right? And. Some are easier graders than others to try to make the, so you could look at all of my numbers and say, okay. Within the context of mine and yours and yours, but in the end, your top five, and then you reckon, or top. Top two, and then you reconcile the top two amongst all the others, and then you figure out where you stand. I get it. We go through this at review time at what's all.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I knew you're not, because you you know what I mean, right?
Yeah, and then the other thing we'll have to complete, and you know, you guys can volunteer to do this too if you want, is uh, we have to also. Post the order of operations for the people to follow. In the replication.
In big sprint.
So, there's a few more steps beyond this.
Yes.
So we'll.
Two weeks.
Narrow these things down then.
As we were talking before this meeting, next, that two weeks, sack of lunch. It's gonna be a long meeting.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna hear the agenda, so you can control them.
Okay. Chief, while you're here. Hunting bylaw proposal re- related to private land in review. What do you wanna do?
So I sent you all a packet.
Yeah.
I would recommend, it's up to you if you wanted to survey the community, get some input. Seventy plus communities across the state have adopted this in one form or another, up through a form of three sentences to a paragraph. But I mean, as our town is getting um, more developed, these, you know, the vast amount of land. That that we once had is now kinda getting closed in and. You can't really walk in any direction for more than ten minutes before you come onto somebody else's property, their house or dwelling. So uh, I think. The downside is it takes some work on part of the hunter to go ahead and ask for the permission and get the paperwork filled out and whatnot. I think a lot of them understand it because they're doing it in other communities anyways. I think for them, uh, for some that I've talked to. When a property owner limits the amount of hunters that are on their property, it makes for better experience for them for themselves. Because they're not walking on top of each other. Um, certainly the homeowners being able to know who's on your property is beneficial. And they can restrict if they so choose versus the burden of trespassing everybody off their land. Um, I don't see any downsides to it by any means. It helps us when we do get calls for shots fired. You know, which happens quite often, because it seems that people get close to their homes. Uh, we have the point of contacts. We get copies of paperwork, the people operating the area supposed to pay for in the car, and the homeowner has it as well. So for whatever reason, we have an emergency, it could just be that we've got a car on the side of the road during hunting season. Why are they there? Um, it gives us at least some maybe direction on what we're looking for. So. Whether you want to do a survey or not, I mean, I don't know if that's really necessary. I would say maybe a member of the board myself. And uh, the band well, I believe. They're just, you know, the reinvent the wheel here, there's already policies on how.
Why don't we have?
Simple form.
Yeah.
Would you think about having like a public information session here at town hall and like on a select board night in April?
I've gotten about a fifty fifty split on this one. I don't know how much, what you've gotten, chief, but you know. I I I can see both sides of the coin, obviously.
I think the.
What have they done in towns with, you know, you've got continuous, continuous land. You know, some of the things I run into actually right out back in my yard is you've got guys that are. You know, tracking deer they shot. How are you, I mean, how are they handling that type of stuff?
I mean, you can, that happens all this time. I hear about it when it happens, you actually go into the other state. You're not licensed and to track an animal, but I mean, you know, I think any uh, the hunters would be favored that. You know, you would allow you to go on their property. You can't leave that animal unattended by any means. Whether there's a notification process, you know, with that, you know, I don't know, something we could explore, but you know. By all means, you wouldn't just cause a cross state property line, let that animal suffer.
Yeah, that's one of the things I was concerned about there as well as, you know.
The property owner still has to um, put the signs on their property.
No.
If they don't.
If they don't, it would be a total no trespassing.
And then you could enforce the no trespass.
Yeah, and you enforce that.
Like Mr. Poozy has out behind our house. He's got, oh, he's got it every, he, I mean, he, I think he did the the measurements. Every fifty feet, he's got a lot of them.
I just, I mean, I've gotten, I've gotten calls on both sides of this too, and this way you can have people come in and if if it's a common sense. Thing, and I hadn't thought of what you just mentioned, you know, with tracking an animal. Into an area where you're maybe posted or what have you. That, you know, I I get it, I hadn't.
Retrieving the dead animal, not tracking it to shoot it on that land. That's different.
Yeah.
But therein you also realize the problem, you you can't let the animal suffer. So.
So that makes.
Well, you know, if, if, they could just play a video of our last meeting and they'd probably wanna die after that anyways. Um. Okay, let's do that. Let's try to put that together for. Cause that'll give us a little bit of time, because if we wanna try to get something for the annual, it's not that far off, really. Here we are in February. Let's try to do it in late March-ish or March sometime. Lane Lees, we talked about that last week. I am going to their meeting, I think it's next week. Um. Anyone heard from Attorney Coyle on sixty-one?
Nothing back.
Town administrator recruitment panels meeting next week. T-Mobile hometown grants. Any update?
Nope, still waiting to talk to Karen about that. I'm actually here, she's gotten anything back from Mr. D and Mrs. Reed.
And then another, I think, next, next meeting twenty, whatever, I keep looking at the wrong calendar. The next meeting twenty-six. We'll, we'll move forward on this uh, town clerk internal job posting, and we'll further talk about the. Some of the space issue and the hours for the town clerk's office to. Any other old business?
No.
Just Mr. D D was asking about Noble Steed.
Okay.
So to answer your questions, Mr. D D, um. I was advised by Carl as well as a few other folks that because of my. Living in the neighborhood, I was, there was that line I didn't wanna cross as far as.
I knew that a long time ago.
Yeah, so, um.
So, nothing.
As far, well, I spoke with Jesse today. Um, he is supposedly trying to find out what the deal is. All I am doing is being an intermediary. I'm not trying to negotiate any deals. I'm just trying to make sure, you know, the concern was. Getting that project done and not having him just throw his hands up, walk away. And that's all, I, all I've been trying to do is keep an open line of communication. Um, as far as it goes, he supposedly, this is, I've told this a couple times. Um, the form is supposed to be being turned into the town. I I believe that's what he said. The town on regarding the conservation restrictions. I guess what happened was there was a form that was done, it got put through, it was ready to go, and then they changed the format. Um, as far as um. That, once that happens, he's ready to get going on that. Uh, uh, he actually mentioned today, he's. I don't know how this would work. Mr. Mogul, and you were on the planning board, and I believe you were too, Mr. D D. He's mentioned possibly looking into keeping it as a private way. So. You know, it's, it's a work in progress.
Well.
Thank you. This too.
Yeah, well, I, I, we've been down that road. I mean, this, not in that one particular thing, but just in my, and so not even speaking to. Knowledge about what's going on on Noble Steed, other than listening to the planning board meetings and there was, you know, the emails back and forth here, but. You know, when. When you build. A subdivision and you go in front of the planning board. And the thing is designed to be laid out as a public way. People buy their homes and make investments based on the fact that they anticipate living on a public way and. I've only seen it once where they wanted to go in the other, where they wanted to go in the other direction, right?
I was told when I moved in there that that first, once phase two, you know, by the pre, the original site super. Once phase two started, my road will be paved. Again, I get the final quote. Um, you know, I've tried to keep on top of Jesse within my legal bounds without overstepping them. And uh, that's the, that's the best I can do. You know, I, like I said, I just tried to keep an open line of communication because sometimes. As I've told Mr. Saltmarsh, it's better to keep people apprised of what's going on, let us know what's going on. When you leave things hanging, people start to get really upset.
Sure, he is absolutely right. Anyhow, there was, when I first, I went over there and I ran into someone that I used to know, we used to work with. Um, and we were talking and they told me, oh, it, the developer told them that they were. Gonna cul-de-sac that at the top and it wasn't gonna complete through.
That's what I was going like when I first moved in.
Hey, wait a minute, that's not what was presented at the planning board, not even what they bonded for. We knew it was a wetland crossing and it was not easy, but it was doable. They had conservation approval to do it. So when, you know, it it becomes kind of a bill of goods that they have to. Make good on the whole thing and, you know, having served on the planning board for a few years before um, joining this board. It's a challenge, every, with every developer, and you gotta stay on them to get, get it done, and you gotta have the bond money to get it done, and I think they're. Perisally close right now, given the inflation that's, that's happened and putting pressure on costs to get that job done. And the longer that stuff sits there and it ages, so.
Last week, the planning board did. Go to update their costs, get the, get new cost estimates and um, see about pursuing the bond to complete. The job.
Yep.
They're on it. They're on top of it.
Nothing about that. Uh, we have executive session. We do have executive. We do have executive session.
Financial license. So he's gonna be calling us tomorrow morning trying to figure things out, so let's get out the open mouth. You hired an officer today.
Yeah.
We didn't lose anybody.
Not yet.
Not yet. So how are we funding that officer?
Chief.
So we've identified some money within our current salaries line item. Earl and I spoke about this. He won't, you know, really go on payroll until May. So we're talking, this is a really small window. We should be able to handle that within our current. Like I said, what we have, we won't be coming before anybody for anything to get into the July one. Thank you.
We practiced before the meeting. We had this all, we did that.
Thank you.
We all were thinking like Carl, so we, we, we thought about it exactly. Okay, so uh, we are gonna go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three. Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Labor Council Litigation Matters and Strategy of Collective Bargaining, Police Union, Fire, I A F F. DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk Union, UPSU, Chief of Police and Interim Town Administrator. Executive session regarding Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three. To move to go into executive session, conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. The chair is declaring that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And that this chair is moving to go into executive session, discuss strategy respect to collective bargaining, and the chair moved to go into executive session. Conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Um. That'll do that one. Collective bargaining, chair move go into executive session, conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy respect to litigation. And that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the body. And not reconvene an open session, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right, any connection therewith to award damages. Uh, roll call vote to go into executive session, Doug Mogul and I.
Jason.